Well, first we got to reconvene into open session from closed session and we have an announcement from City Attorney Quinn Barrow.
Thank you, Mayor. As previously announced, the City Council in the closed session this afternoon to discuss the piece of existing litigation identified on the agenda. There was no reportable action taken.
Okay, so we're going to adjourn from closed session and welcome to the City Council regular meeting for June 4th, 2025. And we are going to have the pledge to the flag with Ms. Hazel Blockley from Pacific Elementary School. So Hazel? There we go. And the flag's right behind you. Okay? Oh, you might want to put that in your left hand. Say anything. Okay?
Face the flag, put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, well done. Thank you. So we are going to have a few words from your principal. They're good words, don't worry, you're not in trouble. Okay? You did that just great. So Ms. Vival, would you please come down and tell us about this wonderful student of yours?
My pleasure. Good evening, everyone. It is my absolute pleasure and honor to stand before you and recognize a truly remarkable individual who embodies all of the qualities of an outstanding citizen. This individual is none other than Hazel Blockley. Hazel is a member of Girl Scouts, Student Council, Green Team, No Place For Hate Committee, and Honor Choir. She plays volleyball, flag football, softball, and basketball. She also participates in musical theater and plays piano. This girl does it all. From the very beginning of her journey at Pacific Elementary, Hazel has been a beacon of leadership, kindness, and positivity. As a member of the Student Council, she has continuously shown her commitment to serving her peers and community, leading with grace and determination. Whether it's in the classroom, on the playground, or within our school community, Hazel's leadership shines brightly, inspiring those around her to be their best selves. But Hazel's impact doesn't stop there. She exemplifies the true meaning of citizenship by choosing kindness at every turn, by lending a helping hand to her teachers, and by being respectful as a friend and a classmate to all. Her dedication to her studies is unmatched, as she consistently goes above and beyond, completing assignments with excellence and pushing herself to new heights. Hazel's zest for life is contagious. With her infectious smile and unwavering positive attitude, she approaches every challenge with courage and determination. Whether she's on the field winning championships or volunteering her time during recess, Hazel's enthusiasm for learning and giving back to her community knows no bounds. Beyond her academic achievements, Hazel is a shining example of versatility and dedication. From sports to the arts, from extracurricular activities to academic pursuits, Hazel fearlessly embraces new experiences... There's more. ...and opportunities. Her list of accomplishments speaks volumes about her commitment to excellence and her willingness to step out of her comfort zone. Hazel, as you prepare to spread your wings and pursue your dreams, always remember the lessons you've learned at Pacific Elementary. Continue to lead with kindness, embrace every opportunity that comes your way, and never forget the power of your own light to illuminate the world around you. Illuminate. Congratulations, Hazel, on this well-deserved recognition. You are truly a shining example of citizenship, leadership, and excellence. We can't wait to see all the amazing things you accomplish in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And so Hazel, on behalf of my City Council colleagues, we have Mayor Pro Tem Amy Hoerth, Councilmember Lesser, Councilmember Napolitano, and Councilmember, there we go, Montgomery. We want to present to you the certificate of recognition that for outstanding citizenship in the Manhattan Beach Unified School District and for leading the pledge today. So, thank you so much. And also that pin. So, we can take photos now?
I've been taking photos all along.
Can you get all of us in here?
Yeah.
Get them all first. Oh, that'd be better. I'll pack up.
Have a look over here. Got it. Thank you.
Well done.
Congratulations. Have a great summer.
Something.
Whatever you want.
We have more. Five thousand words.
Okay. Great. So, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Lesser.
Here.
Councilmember Napolitano.
Here.
Councilmember Montgomery.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Hoerth.
President.
Mayor Franklin.
Here. And at this time, we'd like to take the opportunity to recognize any United States Military Veterans that are in the audience. So if you would, just go ahead and stand and be acknowledged. So we have Chief back there in the Marine Corps.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Moving on to the ceremonial calendar, we have the presentation of plaques to outgoing Commissioners and Board Members, Parks and Recreation Commissioners Lori McCarthy. Well, we'll go through that, but you know who you are. So if you would, go ahead and come down here. That would be Lori McCarthy, Daniel Greenberg, Ron Spackman, and Samantha Erlich, and Library Commissioners Janet Jones and Catherine Jester.
Congratulations.
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 All right. So, there we go.
All, there's others as well, but they could not make it this evening. But these are your fellow residents who have taken their time at their busy schedules to give back to the community. These commissions are a great asset to the council here. They go and take a lot of the initial issues that are bubble up from the community. They do this, they do...
The heat.
The heat, yeah, thank you. They take the heat for us. And because we can't do it all, but they fill a great purpose for getting us the information, interfacing with other residents, bringing forth proposals that are considered by the council. So it's very important work, and we want to acknowledge those folks who are leaving their commission assignments this evening. So we will start with Daniel Greenberg? Did I see Daniel?
No.
Oh, okay. And Mr. Rod Spackman. There you go. Thank you so much. And you're leaving which commission? I'm sorry.
I'm leaving the Cultural Arts Commission.
Okay, great. And you've certain others?
No, just Cultural Arts. Happy to see the Nautilus going up on the fire department.
That's great. So if you like all the artwork, his name is Rod Spackman. If you don't like it, his name is Mud. All right, yes. And we have retiring from the Library Commission is Janet Jones. And where are you off to now? What extracurricular activities?
So many things. So many things. I run a nonprofit, so I'll be spending a lot of time working on that, on the Single Mom Project. I'll be a board member for Leadership Manhattan Beach, and I hope doing a million things for the community besides commission work.
Great, thank you. Always making me feel lazy. Okay. And Samantha. There we go. And let me read that for Cultural Arts Commission. Great. How did you enjoy it?
I liked it a lot.
Yeah?
Yeah, I thought it was a great opportunity.
And what was your favorite project?
I liked choosing the murals.
The murals, great. Again, if you like the artwork, this is, no. That's great. I don't know if you've noticed it around town. Of course, you see it now in the fire station, you see all the utility boxes, you see the statues. This weekend, the Library Commission was out in this plaza with the Lightgate sculpture. So that came through the Cultural Arts Commission and had a lot of people there for photos. So all that wonderful art that you see out there is courtesy of you and your colleagues. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Is there anybody else here? That's, that's it? Okay, great. So photos? Photos?
I'm going to come towards you. Hold your square footage that way. We got a little to our right. Everybody shift a little to your right.
The chair.
Oh, the chair.
How's that?
Ready? One, two, three. Yes.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Yeah, leave the chairs. I think the chairs should go.
Okay, now we have a very... We have a very special presentation to the members of the Black Scholars Union Club out of Miracoastah High School. Having two kids that went through high school, I am pleased when students get involved in things that are outside themselves. And these great students put a little, put a lot of time into this. They put forth their energies into our Juneteenth celebration and helped out with that quite a bit. They came here, just like tonight, they came here to advocate for it before, you know, before City Council for us to vote on it. They got, at school, they got students to sign up to take the survey, which is very important because those surveys give us a lot of ideas on what we want this celebration to look like. So we want to take time today to recognize these students and to wish them well. And so may I see, Donae Ward? Donae Ward? How are you doing?
I'm good, how are you?
Fine, thank you. So I'm going to need your help because you see, we got a lot of people here, okay? So what I'm going to do is I'm going to hand you like one stack at a time. And then...
Give him the microphone.
And then I'll hold the microphone for you if you just start saying the names there. But tell us a little bit about your journey here and how you got here and how you decided to get the group of students together and do this great work.
I actually joined the Black Scholars Union my freshman year, towards the end of my freshman year. And I actually didn't know that there was a Black Scholars Union because I went to a majority-black middle school, or not a majority-black middle school, but a majority-black elementary school. And then I transferred from Inglewood to here, Hermosa Beach, which was a very big cultural change. So I was kind of scared to come over here where I didn't have that many people that were my skin color or knew what I was going through. But they really welcomed me when I came here. And when I went into high school, I found out that there were people like me because at my middle school, it was me, my brother, and like maybe two other people. So being able to know that there were a lot of people at my high school that were like me really made me happy, and I was so glad that I was able to meet them. And I decided after that I would sign up for a position on the board. I wasn't originally supposed to sign up for the president position, but I just decided to go for it because you never know what could happen. So I did, and then I got the position. And then I also, I wanted to like get our name out more because since there's not that many black people at our school, I wanted people to know that there are black people at Miracoastah High School and that there are black people in Manhattan Beach and Hermosa Beach, and that it's not just only one culture here, that we can have multiple cultures here. And when I heard that there was a debate going on about whether we needed to have a Juneteenth celebration, I was immediately on it because I was like, obviously, we need to have a Juneteenth celebration. Because first of all, it's a federal holiday. Second of all, Brutus Beach is over here, which is very big in our culture. And if we didn't have a Juneteenth celebration, I just felt like we were losing a part, we were not only losing a part of our humanity by not having it, but also we're just not celebrating people that we should be celebrating, who fought for this land and allowed us to stay in this land that we have today. So, yeah.
That's terrific. Well done. This is City Council, and you know, when, Steve, how old do you have to be to?
Eighteen.
Eighteen? Yeah, so he is the youngest mayor that we had way back when... Not now. Yeah, not now.
Might still be the youngest.
Yeah. So, and, oh, I'm so sorry, I forgot to read the certificate of recognition. So the City Council, my colleagues here and I of Manhattan Beach do hereby recognize Donae Ward for the Black Scholars Union Club President for their advocacy, support, and leadership in increasing a cultural awareness and activism and advancing awareness of social justice issues for a Juneteenth celebration in Manhattan Beach dated this fourth day of June 2024. Okay. So if you can go ahead and say the next name?
Seftis Peters.
There you go. Congratulations. Yeah. Thanks for your help.
Carter Allen.
Hey, Carter. Hey, nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay up here though, right? Lauren Ward.
Hi, Lauren. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right.
Catherine Glavin.
I think you're my neighbor, right? She grew up on the other side of our back fence. We're fence neighbors, so. Great. I think you even babysat my grandkids as well. So thank you.
I'm sorry if I butchered your last name, but Michaela Navaretz.
Oh.
Oh, Gomika. That's okay, I'll get her.
Hi, Michaela.
Hi.
Hi, so nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too.
Thank you.
Theodora Twitupo.
Hi, Theodora. So nice to meet you. Congratulations, thanks for your help.
Thank you.
Ryan Kim.
Hi, Ryan. Congratulations. Thanks for your help.
Lalea Twitupo.
Hi, Lalea. Hey, nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your work.
Raven Melvin.
Hi, Raven. Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Great. And Skylar Wills. Hi, Skylar. Nice to meet you. Thanks for all your work. You can sing "God Bless America"?
All right.
Great. Well, parents, now's a good time to come on in and get your photos. Oh, wait, wait a minute. Wait, yeah, we have one more, I'm sorry. The teacher.
Yeah, she wants to do a picture because she got the bat.
Can you just present them their certificate again if you would?
This is me, how we do it. I love it.
There we go.
You look like a politician.
Great.
Sweetheart, calm step up this way.
Okay.
Because they care for Janet and her.
That good? There we go.
Janet Allen, don't forget Janet too.
Okay, yes, and then Janet Allen. There we go, Janet. Hi, oh, absolutely, thank you. Thank you for taking the time. All right.
Let's stagger. We gotta do some staggering, okay? At least, and then people move in. We'll get behind you. Should we sit here? They want you down. Yeah, okay. How are we doing?
Students up front.
Oh, well, okay. Look at this person first, and then to center. Start left, move center. No, I'm not boss.
Hold on, we got one more.
Yeah, Scootin'.
Mommy, dance over there.
Scootin'. Sweetheart, she's asking you to.
No, we got one more. We got one more.
No, no.
No picture yet.
No picture yet.
Maliki Garbo.
Oh, so sorry. I'm so sorry.
There you go. Thank you. And one more.
And then...
Basa?
I don't think...
Basa Fano?
He's not here today.
Okay. We got that mixed up. Sorry about that, buddy.
All right. Go, small one right here. One, two, three. Got it.
Red light, but it's still in the air. Bring it down.
Okay.
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
Thumbs up?
Thank you all.
Congratulations. Same time next year.
Okay, Rachel, do it.
Same time next year. Remember, we hit the same time next year.
Oh.
That's awesome. Al.
All right.
I know, but you need a shout out too.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Since, you know, we'll fill some space while people are leaving. Juneteenth that the kids have worked on is going to be Saturday.
Okay, you can do it during, you have community announcements.
Okay, all right. I was just trying to talk, well, there's two events, right?
Winter? Oh, that's...
Okay.
Okay.
Well done.
Ladies and gentlemen, awesome, we shall hire her.
I know.
Pushing her around like a rag doll. We're seeing as a volleyball injury. Six-man endurance.
I can wait two seconds.
I can't hit it off. I cleared everybody up.
Okay.
You can stay. All right.
We can go ahead and, we can go ahead and proceed, Martha?
Can't hear anything up there, it's too loud.
Yeah, you gotta wait.
Well, no, I mean, we can...
Can't hear anything down here either, it's too loud.
What?
When they close the door, we can't hear anything. All right. We're good.
Yeah, okay. Moving on to approval of agenda and waiver of full reading of ordinances. So moved by Mayor Pro Tem Amy Hoerth and seconded by Councilmember Richard Montgomery. Vote, please. Thank you. And now we have City Council...
Wait.
Oh, sorry.
Push the two screens at once.
Motion passes 5-0.
And these, we have City Council and community organization announcements of upcoming events for one minute per person.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council Members. I'm Community Development Director Talen Marzakanyan. This week, the City Council received emails from residents regarding an extension of an appeal period for an upcoming decision on a telecommunications permit in the public right-of-way near 1720. Setia Avenue. This afternoon, staff responded to those residents via email, notifying them that their request was granted and that once a decision is made, the appeal period will be extended to two weeks. If anyone has questions on this matter, they're welcome to contact the Planning Division with the Community Development Department. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Any other, please?
Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council, my name is Anthony Gomes, I'm your Deputy Fire Chief. In a continued effort by the Fire Department to reengage with our community, with our Community Risk Reduction Section, we're proud to announce our partnership with PulsePoint. PulsePoint is a 911 mobile app that alerts our residents and community members and the visitors of our Manhattan Beach community of emergency events. Starting tomorrow, PulsePoint subscribers will be able to follow Manhattan Beach Fire and choose to be notified of significant events that may occur and may affect themselves or their families. These notifications could include fires, vehicle accidents, flooding, or even utility emergencies. We want to continue to improve the situational awareness of our residents and build a safer, stronger, and more resilient community. PulsePoint helps us do that. So we'd like to invite everybody to download the app. You can see the flyer behind you, and we have a QR code for residents to go on, and it takes you directly to the website.
Great, thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Lauren Wubbles, and I'm here from the Manhattan Beach Library. Our Summer Discovery Program has begun and runs through August 11th for readers of all ages. Sign up online or in person to read books, complete fun activities, and earn prizes. Also, concurrent with that, our One Book One County program has also started, so please join the largest book club in your community by reading "LA Weather" by Maria Ampara Escondón with limited ebook and audiobook copies available on Libbion Overdrive. Teens are invited to study hall hours at the library to prepare for finals. The large meeting room will be open for additional study space for teens for the next two weeks, and snacks will be provided. This Saturday at 2:00, adults are welcome to join us for a relaxing afternoon making DIY coastal-inspired oyster shell trinket dishes for your jewelry or small household items. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor, sorry, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council Members, City Officials, Mr. Lee. My name is Bobby Bell, and I am the Recycling Educator for WM. Much like the artist formerly known as Prince, Richard, WM is the rebranding of Waste Management. So I will say WM slash Waste Management moving forward.
Thank you.
I appreciate you. I am here to announce our second annual, second annual, or second paper shred of the year. It's coming up June 22nd at Miracoastah High School in the student parking lot. It's from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. It's a first-come, first-served situation. It's a drive-through. We ask that everybody stay in their vehicle for safety. Every resident of Manhattan Beach is allowed to bring up to three boxes, and I look forward to seeing you guys all on Saturday. God bless. Thank you so much, that's a great service.
Good evening, Mayor and Members of the City Council. We are members of ASB. My name is Charlie Stasco, and we are here to give an update on Miracoastah High School. So on June 1st, we had our prom. This event sold well over 1,000 tickets and took place at the Ronald Reagan Museum. It allowed the students to explore various parts of the museum, such as Air Force One, had a fantastic DJ, and many other things that many of the students appreciated. Along this, we have senior finals approaching. Starting tomorrow, seniors will begin to take their finals. They will be taking their finals in reverse order, meaning that they will start with fits and six-period finals, and they will end on the 7th with second and first-period finals.
So Charlie?
Yeah.
Charlie, what was the coolest thing at the Ronald Reagan Museum?
There was a whole bunch of things that were super cool. My personal favorite thing, we had a robot that came out with LED lights to help the DJ get the crowd excited. So I thought that was pretty cool.
Oh, that's great, thank you.
Hi, my name's Jaden, I'm also a representative from ASB. I'm here to talk about some upcoming events. So on June 7th, we have our senior breakfast. After seniors take their last final, they're going to go to... in the public right-of-way near 1720. Setia Avenue. This afternoon, staff responded to those residents via email, notifying them that their request was granted and that, once a decision is made, the appeal period will be extended to two weeks. If anyone has questions on this matter, they're welcome to contact the Planning Division with the Community Development Department. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Any other, please?
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is Anthony Gomes, I'm your Deputy Fire Chief. Um, in a continued effort by the Fire Department to reengage with our, uh, community, with our Community Risk Reduction Section, we're proud to announce our partnership with Pulse Point. Uh, Pulse Point is a 911 mobile app that alerts our residents and community members and the visitors of our Manhattan Beach community of emergency events. Uh, starting tomorrow, Pulse Point subscribers will be able to follow Manhattan Beach Fire and choose to be notified of significant events that may occur and may affect themselves or their families. Uh, these notifications could include fires, vehicle accidents, flooding, or even utility emergencies. Uh, we want to continue to improve the situational awareness of our residents and build a safer, stronger, and more resilient community. Pulse Point helps us do that. Uh, so we'd like to invite everybody to download the app. Um, you can see the flyer behind you, and we have a, um, a QR code for residents to go on and it takes you directly to the website.
Great, thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Lauren Wubbles and I'm here from the Manhattan Beach Library. Our summer discovery program has begun and runs through August 11th for readers of all ages. Sign up online or in person to read books, complete fun activities, and earn prizes. Our, also, in concurrent with that, our One Book One County program has also started. So please join the largest book club in your community by reading "LA Weather" by Maria Ampara Escondon with unlimited ebook and audiobook copies available on Libyan Overdrive. Teens are invited to study hall hours at the library to prepare for finals. The large meeting room will be open for additional study space for teens for the next two weeks, and snacks will be provided. This Saturday at two, adults are welcome to join us for a relaxing afternoon making DIY coastal-inspired oyster shell trinket dishes for your jewelry or small household items. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor, sorry, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Councilmembers, City officials, Mr. Lee. My name is Bobby Bell and I am the recycling educator for WM. Much like the artist formerly known as Prince, Richard, WM is the rebranding of waste management, so I will say WM slash Waste Management moving forward.
Thank you.
I appreciate you. I am here to announce, uh, our second annual, second annual, or second paper shred of the year. It's coming up June 22nd at Maricosta High School in the student parking lot. Is from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. It's a first-come, first-serve situation. It's a drive-through, we ask that everybody stay in their vehicle for safety. Um, every resident of Manhattan Beach is allowed to bring up to three boxes, and I look forward to seeing you guys all on Saturday. God bless.
Thank you so much, that's a great service.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. Uh, we are members of ASB. My name's Charlie Stasco and we are here to give an update on Maricosta High School. Um, so on June 1st, we had our prom. Uh, this event sold well over 1,000 tickets and took place at the Ronald Reagan Museum. It allowed the students to explore various, uh, parts of the museum such as Air Force One. Had a fantastic DJ, um, and many other things that many of the students appreciated. Uh, along this, uh, we have senior finals approaching. Uh, starting tomorrow's, tomorrow, seniors will begin to take their finals. Uh, they will be taking their finals in reverse order, meaning that they will start with Fitz and Series Six Period, uh, finals, and they will end on the 7th with, uh, second and first period finals.
So Charlie?
Yeah.
Charlie, what was the coolest thing at the Ronald Reagan Museum?
Um, there was a whole bunch of things that were super cool. Um, my personal favorite thing, we had a robot, uh, that came out with LED lights, uh, to help the, the DJ, um, get the crowd excited. So I thought that was pretty cool.
Oh, that's great, thank you.
Um, hi, my name's Jaden, I'm also a representative from ASB. I'm here to talk about some upcoming events. So, on June 7th, we have our senior breakfast. Uh, after seniors take their last final, they're gonna go to the auditorium and they'll go over what will happen during graduation, and in addition, what will happen in the following weeks. There's also gonna be breakfast burritos served for the students on this day. Also, upcoming finals, seniors have finals throughout this week going on right now. And juniors, sophomores, and freshmen have finals next week from Tuesday up until Thursday. And the senior graduation is June 13th at Maricosta from 5:00 to 6:00 PM.
Great, thank you.
Eric could chaperone that. Eric could chaperone that.
Yeah.
Uh, hello, my name's Henry, I'm another student from ASB at Costa. Um, on the topic of graduation, we have our Strand Stroll that will be hosted after graduation on June 13th, uh, for the graduating seniors to walk on the strand. The graduates will board buses and commence their walk on the 22nd Street in Hermosa to the Manhattan Pier where they will celebrate their send-off. Additionally, on that night, they will have grad night where buses will take them to a mysterious location and it will allow them to have a safe celebration of their graduation alongside a lot of the seniors that they have been, that they have gone through their high school experience with. Um, additionally, Orchestra will be having their send-off concert this Fri- this Friday, June 7th, and they will be playing the music that they plan to play when they travel throughout Europe. Uh, this is following the band's send-off concert which was last Thursday, May 30th, and they will, they similarly performed a lot of the songs that they will be performing in Europe. Thank you.
Great, thank you. How many signed up for the grad, for the grad night?
Um, I think it's about 500 right now.
500, wow.
Yeah.
Have fun, be careful.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Councilmembers. My name is Rita Crabtree Kumpa and I'm coming to you with an announcement from MB Safe, Manhattan Beach Safe Alternatives for Everyone. On Thursday from 5:00 to 8:00 at Grunion's, we will be, um, hosting some appetizers and, and some soft drinks. Um, but we would like, uh, we're hosting an information night for the community if you have any curiosity about what our organization is. Um, what is the city doing with homelessness and how we are involved and how, what, how you can address homelessness when you see someone who's on the streets and needing help. So come and join us, we'll see you at Grunion's Thursday, June 6th, 5:00 to 8:00 PM. See you there.
Great, thank you Rita. And thank you for the work that MB Safe does. Anybody else for community announcements? Colleagues?
Uh, yeah, I was just going to, um, mention, uh, you know, you honored the, uh, students from the Black Scholars Union. Um, on Juneteenth, which is June 19th, which is a Wednesday, there will be a ceremony, uh, at Bruce's Beach. Um, I believe that one is at 10:00 AM. And, um, that will be a ceremony honoring the day at, at that site. And then, on June 22nd, which is the Saturday after, at Polywog Park starting at 11:00 AM, is when the celebration, uh, that the kids have really worked hard on, as well as Tracy Wines and other members of, uh, our community have worked on with music and food and a lot of cultural, uh, activities of significance. So that will be June 22nd, 11:00 AM, Polywog.
Great, thank you.
Your Honor, I have one comment. I know people that have moved here don't know we're talking about, say, the homeless issue. You read it at LA Times, think it applies to Manhattan Beach. We're not the same. In 2017, the numbers were 41 homeless that we counted. The last update that we did account was nine. Through multi-pronged effort from our own mental health teams, PD, Fire, MB Safe, and other volunteers, we haven't seen an update from LA County. We don't agree with the numbers they gave last, they held off providing the cities actual numbers. We know our numbers are lower than what they purport, but I'm hoping the next time you get a chance, George, you can ask the county if they're gonna either A, release the numbers they have from last year, which no one has seen from our cities, or B, they can disregard the numbers and we update ourselves going forward. I'll stop there, thank you, Your Honor.
Uh, so I'd like to just make a, a quick, uh, announcement about, uh, you saw these on your seats when you came in, and everybody's got them, wave them, thank you Tim, thank you Dr. Lee, appreciate that. So, uh, this is part of the e-bike, uh, education program here in Manhattan Beach. So you've got one side of this, uh, flyer has rules of the road, and then the other side is e-bike safety. We're gonna hear about e-bikes here in just a second, but it's a good reminder for children, even for adults. Because, uh, adults, you gotta remember, you got to follow the rules of the road, just as if you're a car. Just because you're on a bicycle doesn't allow you to run through stoplights and stop signs and things like that. So these are very important, I know it's kinda like cartoons, but it's, uh, it's good, it's, it has saved a lot of kids. Uh, this along, education along with enforcement, uh, is making a big dent in, uh, in accidents and the like, so, uh, if there's no more community announcements...
Mr. Mayor, we do have Heather Kim on Zoom.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Hi, um, I'm not sure if the, it was mentioned already, but there is a community town hall meeting on public safety um, from the Manhattan Beach Police Department. It can place, um, I think it's June 26th, uh, later this month. 6:00 to 7:00 PM at Jocelyn Center. Um, you are to submit questions ahead of time at askacop@manhattanbeach.gov. I would urge everyone to attend and, um, also urge people to submit their questions, but also ask for a format change, um, so that it can be like a real town hall where uh, citizens ask questions and get answers and not just have a presentation. So please email that, askacop@manhattanbeach.gov and ask for a more interactive, uh, question and answer period. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you Heather, anyone else on Zoom?
There's no additional requests.
Okay. Seat Manager, Chief Johnson?
Good evening, Mayor Franklin, and members of the City Council. I'm Rachel Johnson, your police chief. I apologize for my raspy voice, I promise you I'm not contagious, but I'm still recovering. I'm before you today to provide an update to the City Council and the community at large regarding two separate, yet related issues. Uh, children on bicycles not obeying the rules of the road and crimes committed by juveniles. Both issues are important, and I'm gonna speak about them separately. But before I begin, I want to remind the community that we will be discussing these issues in greater depth at our town hall meeting, which is scheduled for Wednesday, June 26th at 6:00 PM at the Jocelyn Center. If there are questions you would like answered at the town hall, please email us at askacop@manhattanbeach.gov. If you have a question, other people likely have that question, so please, uh, send it to us so that we can provide a comprehensive answer and incorporate those concerns into our presentation. As electric bicycles have become a more common method of transportation, especially in the coastal cities, we're seeing a proliferation of e-bikes ridden by both children and adults. Often, especially with children, we are seeing careless riding that manifests itself in the form of running stop signs, riding without helmets, and a lack of adherence to basic traffic laws. And as the council is aware, the Police Department has worked with Mayor Franklin to provide education on the rules of the road, um, in partnership with the school district. In conjunction with that education, the Police Department has conducted forward-directed enforcement operations since the beginning of the year to address issues related to the safe operation of bicycles, with the most recent operation conducted last Friday. That operation consisted of not only Manhattan Beach Police Department personnel, but also personnel from our neighboring agencies, and 30 citations were issued on Friday alone, and one, uh, vehicle was impounded during that enforcement effort. For the first four months of the year, our team has written over 200 citations to bicyclists, and we continue to work in partnership with the Hermosa Beach Police Department, the Redondo Beach Police Department, and the El Segundo Beach Police Department on this, on this matter. And we have several direct enforcement days related to the safe operation of bicycles planned for the summer months throughout the South Bay. Once school is out for the summer, you'll see our school resource officers out patrolling on bicycles. And in addition to our SROs, we traditionally bring back our beach patrol every summer, and this year is no different. These officers travel on bicycles and off-road vehicles and will be patrolling downtown, the beach, and other areas of the city where there are mobility aids and patrolling more efficiently. We plan to host another bicycle safety event this year where we will provide information about safe riding habits, as well as a little show from some professional bike riders. Once we've confirmed the date, I'll be sure to share that with the City Council and the community at large. Much of the input that I receive about traffic issues related to bicycles concerns licensing and registration of bicycles. And I understand the desire to have some metrics in place to ensure our youngest riders have, are informed of the rules of the road and they're riding bikes that are appropriate for their age and maturity, um, as well as just having an overall understanding of how fast they can go on those bicycles. Uh, unfortunately, the legislation that was moving, uh, through the state to require licensing for e-bikes has been amended to the point that it's, doesn't recognize, doesn't resemble the initial bill, and it's really not meeting our community concerns on the matter. And I know some of that is just because of the, what the bill was asking for, which was a licensing scheme for persons under, um, between 12 and 16 to be able to operate e-bikes. And I know that, that testing, adding all of those new folks to have to take a test at the DMV and be licensed is probably some of the attendant issues we have with regard to why that bill is now a much more watered-down version of itself. Nevertheless, we're still paying attention and we hope that a similar bill will be more successful as we, as e-bikes become more commonplace and more communities throughout our state experiences some of the challenges that we are having with safe, safe bicycle riding. I also wanna talk to the council and inform the community that while we can't require bicycle registration, we are looking to, into a voluntary, voluntary bicycle registration program that will provide us with the means not only to register bicycles, but also aid in the recovery if they are stolen. My goal is to provide the community with more information on this at our town hall later this month. The other part of this matter involves crimes committed by juveniles in our community. And I just wanna be clear with the council and the community, we investigate all crimes committed by juveniles to the furthest extent possible. We take these crimes seriously, no matter where the kids live or anything like that. Whether you're a local kid or you're from out of town, we treat you the same. We're, we want enforcement, we don't want crimes committed by anyone in our community, and we want our youngest residents to grow up without fear of, uh, getting assaulted or having their property vandalized or stolen. The juvenile justice system differs, uh, from the adult justice system in that the overarching goal is rehabilitation. And so what that translates to in terms of outcomes is outcomes that are just, that are not linear and they're not the same even for two people involved in the same incident, just because of how the juvenile justice system uh, looks at criminal acts, looks at a person's past history, and how they decide to move forward and what they feel will give the juvenile the best shot, if you will, at being rehabilitated and not reoffending. Your team at the Police Department, your school resource officers, your juvenile detective, and the field operations team, we take this all very seriously, and we're using all available means at our disposal to issue citations and make arrests when crimes are committed. Unfortunately, not everything progresses quickly, so we may make arrests weeks after an incident is committed if we're not able to catch the perpetrators at the time of the incident. I ask for the public's assistance in several ways with this. Uh, one, if you see something, please call us. Please say the non-emergency number into your phone, so you don't have to look it up when you call us. It's 310-545-4566. Alternatively, um, if you're a big fan of our Reach Manhattan Beach app, which I am, it's also listed on the homepage of the Reach Manhattan Beach app, so you can call the police emergency line from there as well. Takes a couple taps, but you can call the non-emergency line from there as well. Please call us. We often hear about incidents that occurred after the fact because no one called us and gave us an opportunity to investigate and perhaps apprehend the offenders. If you witness this activity and you call us, please don't involve yourself. Please just be a great witness, I love nothing more than a great witness and I don't want to endanger, um, someone who's being a good citizen and a good witness because they decided to involve themselves in what was going on. If you are a victim of a crime perpetrated by a juvenile, I need you to call us. Um, often what we need in order to submit a case to juvenile probation is someone to tell us how they were harmed, um, by the incident, whether it was their property was vandalized, their property was stolen, um, they were harmed, we need you to call us and tell us what happened so that we can take a report and that allows us to submit it to the juvenile justice system for further adjudication. If you have information, um, that you, that you know directly that would help us solve a crime or identify perpetrators, I'd like you to email us at eyewitness, that's I like your eyeball, E-Y-E, witness@manhattanbeach.gov. It obviously helps us if the information that you're providing, uh, to that email address is firsthand to you. Um, however, any information you have is appreciated. Having firsthand information prevents our team from having to sift through versions of the same videos submitted by parties who found them on social media, but don't have any information that would help us identify the suspect, the victim, or location. So something else that is important to note regarding this matter is, um, that, you know, I said the progression of a juvenile through the justice system is not linear, so, but also, it's important to know that the law does not allow us in most cases to hold kids, um, in a, in our juvenile detention center, uh, facility for longer than six hours. And with that, with us not being able to hold anyone for longer than six hours, and really juvenile hall only taking, um, serious and violent crimes, that means that most people, even if they're arrested, are released a short time after that arrest from our police station. Many of the outcomes regard, that will happen with the juvenile justice system include diversion, community service, um, probation, and other restorative justice aspects. You don't often see, unless the crime is serious and violent, uh, these, uh, children doing hard time in juvenile hall and things like that. Could, because the goal is rehabilitation, the goal is to restore the victim and also have the juvenile understand how the, how the harm they, how the crime they committed is harmful. We are working very hard to forget, put together top-notch cases for probation because it's their purview to determine the appropriate outcomes. And the last thing I wanna touch on for our community, um, is something that's often brought up regarding electric bikes, and that's impoundment. You know, um, when we see kids that are running stop signs, we want their, we want to, there's a desire to impound their bicycles. And what the law allows us to do is very different than that. And if you think about cars and e-bikes the same way for just a moment, it helps. If a car runs a stop sign, we can usually just issue it a citation, and barring any other unforeseen circumstances, we send that driver on their way with their citation in their car. Now, if someone runs eight stop signs and is, um, you know, doing burnouts, well, that's reckless driving, and we can make an arrest and we can seize their car, but those are two very different things, right? It's the same thing, um, involving electric bicycles for mere traffic infractions. We often cannot impound these bicycles. If the bicycle is actually a motorcycle, a motorized vehicle, we can. If the bicycle is used as the instrumentality of the crime, that means if someone is doing burnouts, you know, on a concrete patio and they're making all sorts of, uh, damage and it's gonna cost money to clean that, well, the, the bicycle's instrumentality of the crime, we can impound for that, but we can't impound for a lot of the traffic infractions that, um, that you commonly see. So, while we impound where we can, and we did on Friday when we had the opportunity, it's not always a remedy that's available to us. Um, this is continuing to be an area of focus for us at the Police Department, and I encourage the community to speak with their kids about the rules of the road, as well as being a good citizen. But also, if you have questions, please send them to us at askacop@manhattanbeach.gov, and we're happy to answer those, both at our town hall and even beforehand. And I'm available for questions.
Yeah, Chief, if you could take some questions?
Yes, sir.
So perhaps there's a message here, but my request, the speak button is not working. Maybe my colleagues have conspired. Chief, can you repeat one more time? Does our city have the ability to require the registration of e-bikes?
No, sir.
Why is that?
The state law prohibits the registration, uh, prohibits us from requiring registration. We can offer it as a voluntary measure, but we cannot require persons riding through our city to register their bicycles.
Thank you.
Okay, next.
Oh, I was trying to, it wouldn't let me withdraw. So you talk, there's a voluntary registration potential?
Yes.
So, like, we could potentially bring that up at a future meeting and talk about it and then give it some teeth, in other words, advertise it so that people know it's out there, like, the benefits of that would be that if a bike is stolen, it might be identified, something like that. So we could, we could direct, you know, to look into that, correct?
Yes, ma'am, my plan is to, um, do the big reveal, if you will, as big a reveal as I do, um, at our town hall meeting about the voluntary registration program, and from there, we'll kick off our, our information push to, to the community.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I guess the one follow-up would be, residents also feel that there's not enough officer presence to catch the offenders, the young kids that are running through stop sign, we all see it and driving recklessly. What's the response of the Police Department to that sense? That there's not enough, um, oversight of our traffic laws by e-bike riders?
I, I certainly can appreciate that concern. I, I know that when I'm, you know, out and about and I see an infraction when I'm on my, you know, time off, I'm, you know, and there's never anyone around, right, and it always feels that way. But do know, um, that your Police Department is around. Um, some interesting things I learned last week was that our response to priority e-calls, like crimes in progress, um, last week was 42 seconds. So, we can't get somewhere in 42 seconds if we're not already, not already out in the area, um, being present. So it was 42 seconds. And then last week, our self-initiated activity, which, as the council knows, is typically far higher than our calls for service, uh, nearly doubled from about 300 self-initiated activities, uh, for the week to over 500. And so our team is out there, they are making stops, they are making contacts. Um, I certainly sympathize with, you know, the old saying, where's a cop when you need him? Because it always seems like when, you know, someone cuts you off, there's no one there, but when you cut someone off, there, you know, the red and blue lights are on. And so I certainly can appreciate that, but do know that we are there. It is, um, our presence and our, our self-initiated activity is a metric that I... is a metric that I follow very closely with my team.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Chief, I just have, so what is your team seeing out there? Are they seeing more compliance with the rules of the road generally?
Pardon me. So we're seeing a little bit of both. We're seeing, I was out Saturday before last around the city, walking around, and I saw a lot of kids with helmets. I saw a lot of kids riding well. And I was, you know, in my vehicle, which is not marked. I saw a lot of people riding very responsibly. But we also, but at the same token, I come back from lunch sometimes, and I see kids doing wheelies. And so I do think that all of the education that you were so vital to bringing to the schools has helped. I see a lot of helmets, and I see a lot of kids stopping. But we, you know, get more kids in the community all the time. Not all of them are as versed with the rules of the road. And sometimes it's, you know, it's fun to be a little reckless when you're a kid because you don't have appreciation of consequences. So even kids who know better sometimes aren't riding safely. But overall, we've seen a significant impact, yes, sir.
Okay. And then can you just elaborate on the parents' involvement? I mean, where, so let's say you stop, you know, a juvenile.
Right.
You've witnessed it, everything like that. Do you take that juvenile back to the station? Do you try to reach the parents and do it in the field? Can you just sort of give us an idea?
So it really depends. But anytime we take a juvenile into custody, like we take them from the field to our facility, their parent or legal guardian has to come get them. Now, if they are given a ticket in the field or spoken with in the field, the officer has a lot of discretion. I'll give you an example from what I did a couple of weeks ago when I was talking to some kids at Metlocks who were riding around. And they were like incredibly polite. And so we got all the parents on the speakerphone, one at a time. And we talked to the parents about what I observed, how nice their kids were, and just asked them to have a conversation about making sure they're reading the signs where they are and that they're well-versed in the rules of the road. But when we contact juveniles, our standard practice is contact the parents and let the parents know what's going on.
Okay. And then, so the parents have to, in some cases, come to the station?
Yes, sir.
Have that conversation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Great. Colleagues, anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief, and your team. Keep doing the good work. We know it's difficult. We know there are little rascals out there, so, but we want them to comply because it's just so important.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. It's not a toy. As I tell people, it's not a toy. E-bikes are not a toy. They are a machine, and they can be deadly. So follow the rules of the road. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so we're going to move on to public comments, but I need to make an announcement first. So it's come to our attention that people have been disrupting city council meetings in other cities with anti-Semitic or racially-based comments through Zoom. Such comments are disruptive and interfere with the people's business and are not within the subject-matter jurisdiction of the city council. I'm instructing the city clerk's office to mute any speakers who attempt to disrupt the meeting with anti-Semitic or derogatory comments based upon race, gender, or other protected categories. And remember, in your public comments, you have one bite at the apple. Essentially, if you make a comment here about an agenda item, you cannot make a comment on when that agenda item comes up. So please, please come on. Come on down. State your name clearly, please.
Good evening. My name is Joan Gasser, and I live at 1720 North Point Setta Avenue in Manhattan Beach. I'm referring to the cell site that was discussed earlier tonight. We have been residents of Manhattan Beach for 34 years, 13 of which have been at this address, raising our two boys. Tonight, I stand before you asking for help in stopping the approval of a cell site upgrade located on a telephone pole in front of our home. The original installation occurred around 4:00 a.m. a number of years ago by Crown Castle. The middle-of-the-night approach to install it was at a minimum suspicious. Although planners are looking for a permit for the original installation, nothing has yet been found. The installing company provided the same story as the letter we received. They don't follow city construction or noise ordinances, and they can do as they please. On June 1st, our neighborhood in general received letters, which have been forwarded to you, stating that the city is set to approve an upgrade to this cell site, which our senior city planner, Mr. Furturros, confirmed is happening this week. There are many unanswered questions at this point. We have no permit for the original installation, yet an upgrade is being approved. We have asked for information on size comparisons to what is there now, and what the city, and the city does not have that. There is nothing written about the sound that we'll emit from this upgrade. This process began in January, yet the city waited until June to notify us, and information is still lacking. What is being installed? I am letting you know that because the letter contained no details, the antenna is 14.6 inches, or 14.6 inches round and nearly two feet tall. The photos provided in the letter are deceiving and have no measurements on them. I did inquire and receive this information. This sits 30 feet from my second-story bedroom window on a telephone pole. In addition to the antenna, the lower, what they call radio shroud, there's no explanation as to what that is, other than that it's equipment, sits on the pole 10 feet up from the ground and is 50 inches, over four feet tall, two and a half feet wide, and over two feet deep. And that sits on the side of the telephone pole in clear view of my front yard. The current system makes a fan-like sound in warm weather, and the proposed unit is roughly five times that size. This is in our front yard. Imagine for a moment if this was placed on the city property sidewalk directly in front of your home. Again, four feet tall. And we don't know what it is and what sounds it will make. And we are told we have no recourse for what is installed. I can't imagine what this will do to our property values. And again, there is no recourse. City council voted in 2019 to keep cell antennas 200 feet of a school. I ask why? Yet this is five houses north of Pacific School. Is that my time?
That's three minutes.
Oh, I didn't get to the good part. Somebody else is going to. Thank you for your time.
Hand it to a neighbor. Thank you, though. I'm sorry, I should have mentioned it's three minutes, and there's a counter.
You can also email it.
And yeah, by all means, email it.
To all of us.
Hi, Heidi Raiden, and I'm here to speak about this outrageous letter from Crown Castle. And I want to share my grave concerns about the city's irresponsible approach to the 5G rollout. These towers are showing up not only in residential areas but near schools, where young children spend the majority of their time. The small group of residents that join me today, they're all sitting over there, are just as upset. And many wrote you guys to express their desire to join an appeal requesting an extension. And they could not be here because of the questionable short notice provided by our planning department. So don't mistake their absence for lack of commitment to fighting this. I'm speaking for myself and for them as well. Behind me sit, again, as I said, some of my neighbors, and they don't want this latest upgrade, and we don't want the tower at all. It's located on Joan's property. It's too, it's far too close to the homes, Pacific Field, and the school buildings. I understand our extension for appeal is being granted, and thank you, but that's not enough. First of all, on Monday, June 3rd, I spoke at length with the project planner Ted Furturros. It's my understanding he is a city employee, but he sure comes across like he works for Crown Castle and not Manhattan Beach. I say this because it was not forthcoming with the information required for me to understand the appeal process. He stated he didn't even know the cost for an appeal, and he is listed on the email as our contact for questions about the appeal process. Additionally, I learned the original application date for this new tower was back in February 2024. However, residents were not in receipt of the public notice until June 2nd. Even worse, the majority of residents within 300 feet radius never received a public notice until after we started complaining, and suddenly they started getting them. That was really weird. So furthermore, there's a two-day notice for appeal, two days. I researched about a dozen other cities, and there's a veritable timeframe for appeals in each city, ranging from 10 to 30 days. When I asked Mr. Furturros why on earth is such a tight window for an appeal and who determines this timeframe, he informed me that it was a city department practice to not only inform residents with such short notice, but also, excuse me, with such short notice, hearing the approval process, but also the city determines the duration of the appeal window. So now I understand why you missed the public notice for that giant 5G tower that's at Live Oak Park. It's totally unacceptable, you guys. Because of this, because of a dangerous surgery that I personally had two years ago, I have to get regular screenings for leiomy sarcoma cancer. It's one of the most deadly cancers. This tower, so close to my home, is a tremendous risk to my health, to Joan's health, who is currently living with stage IV cancer. And it's a known fact that these towers are very, very dangerous for young children. In addition to the granted appeal, we are asking you guys, a city liaison forthcoming with information that can support us in the appeal process. We need to know the cost of the appeal, and we are asking the city to adopt laws, as other cities have, restricting placement of the towers within 1,000 feet of homes and 2,500, within 2,500 feet of all our schools. I'm asking you guys, as our leaders, to protect our health and follow the dozens of other cities and towns across America that have done this. I, this is not part of my public comment, but thank you. I have to publicly thank Bruce Mo, because he literally always responds. For what, two years, I kind of bug you with my questions? You never not respond to me, and I really appreciate it. So you are going to be missed in your retirement. Thank you, guys.
Hello, city council members and city management. My name is Andreas Koch, and I am a resident on Ardmore Avenue. Unlike the other topics here, I'm here to talk just briefly or voice my concern about the e-bike, all the violence and the safety issues going on. This is great. Thank you. This is awesome about the safety. Mine is more about the aggression of some of these kids, namely this goons gang I'm referring to. I've learned recently that there's been some proactive measures, and that's awesome. I guess really part of it is just a fact find here, and there was some good information shared. And also just to voice my concern as a parent of a teenager that was actually bullied and was chased by a gang at the Redondo Brake Wall. Now, why am I here? Maybe there's an opportunity to have a coalition with other cities, Redondo, Hermosa, Manhattan, and maybe that's happening. These kids are roaming from city to city. I'm glad to hear that there's been suppression on some of this. Guess more of a suggestion on having a collaboration with the other cities and also to say, I'm still seeing it. My son is still a bit nervous to be riding around. My son and his girlfriend were on the Redondo Brake Wall, and they were chased by this group of bullies. Do they wear a patch that says, "I'm in this gang," or "I'm in this gang"? They do not. They just camouflage themselves within the community. So it's not that easy to find, you know, insignia on the back of a jacket or some gang member. So it's a challenge. I get it. But what I wanted to mention is that if we can put our efforts forward and still continue with this, it's not easy. And let's see if we can come up with some kind of multi-city solution here. Just an idea, maybe off-base, but we're still a little bit nervous in walking about the city there with this so-called kid gang on e-bikes. So thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Great. Thank you, Andreas. Any more public comments? Oh, yeah, there you go.
Hi, I'm Denise Patton. I live next door to Joan Gasser at 1716 Point Setta, and our property and family is affected by this proposed cell tower addition as well. I just was gonna, I didn't prepare anything because I talked to Ted today and haven't received any feedback from him yet. But I was going to finish up with Joan Gasser's comments, if that's okay.
Sure.
She was speaking about the antenna. The city council voted in 2019 to keep cell antennas 200 feet of a school. Yet this tower is five houses north of Pacific School. So the question is why? Somehow, this antenna is exempt from that ruling. How can it be 30 feet from her bedroom as well as our bedroom? The report that she has received regarding the safe and dangerous areas only tests for a maximum exposure of six minutes. We would be in our homes sleeping for eight hours, so six minutes seems silly. Not quite sure where, why that is even considered effective. Joan has stage IV metastatic breast cancer. Although she does not know the cause, she does know that she is severely immune-compromised. We would like, are asking the city council to help us protect our home, our family, our property values, and really our community. There are better ways to spend, for all of us to spend our time than worrying about what-if from this tower. We understand that cell sites are, there is a need for them within the city. What we don't understand is why it needs to be placed in a neighborhood when it could easily be placed at a commercial site on Manhattan Beach Boulevard, Sepulveda. There is other options. Speaking with the city planner today, Ted, he said his job wasn't to make suggestions. It was just to check the box to make sure that this fit within Manhattan Beach city regulations. That's not very supportive of Manhattan Beach as a community. I've lived here for 35 years. I've been in this property owner for 25. So I would ask all of you to help us come up with a better solution for this, move it out of our neighborhood or all of our neighborhood. A commercial site would be great. And really, that's it for wrapping it up. Thank you.
Good evening. Tim Jones, Manhattan Beach resident, 20 some odd years, across the street from Robinson School. When I heard that the students were going to be recognized this evening, there was no way in the world that I could not be here. Dating myself, I grew up in the time when I had relatives attending the March from Washington, Angela Davis, Black Panther, free lunch program, free breakfast program, daycare by the Black Panthers in Oakland. So here's something that I thought might be interesting, and I intended it for the students primarily, about student activism. Brief history. 1942 to 43, The White Rose, a peaceful resistance group of students in Nazi Germany who began anonymously publishing leaflets opposing the Nazi regime and painting graffiti on buildings with phrases like "Down with Hitler." Members were caught and executed. 1960, the Greensboro sit-in. Four black students from the North Carolina, from North Carolina A&amp;T College went inside Woolworth's and sat at the lunch counter. When denied service, they refused to leave. Police quickly arrived. The protest grew. By the summer, many businesses and public facilities began integrating. 1989, Chinese students began protesting for more individual freedoms and human rights. Huge numbers of student protesters gathered in Tiananmen Square. To disperse the crowds, the People's Liberation Army arrived with tanks and tear gas. Thousands were arrested and some executed. I was hoping to let the students to know that they should use this experience to develop your own moral compass. With time and experience, your magnetic needle will become steady. There may be efforts, I'm sorry, there may be offers of financial reward or threats of career destruction by those who try to change your course. The First Amendment protects free speech. It's the First Amendment for very good reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Your honor.
Yes.
Hey, Tim. Unfortunately, I wish the students had heard your message earlier.
It's a media.
All right.
If you want to get your words to them, do you know how to reach Janet Allen? Yeah.
That's good. Thank you.
And Tim will be speaking at the Bruce's speech.
Good warm-up.
Juneteenth, yes. Okay? Anybody in council chambers? No? How about online? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Lester.
Once we've received Zoom comments.
Okay. I'll wait until she's done. Okay. Anybody online?
We have Heather Kim.
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you to Mayor Franklin and to the City Council for your push for the public displays of patriotism. It was so heartwarming to see all the American flags lined up and down Manhattan Beach Boulevard and on the Strand and basically everywhere in Manhattan Beach. What a unifying symbol of our country, and I really appreciated it. I know many of our neighbors that I talked to really love seeing that as well. I hope we can continue, continue that and, you know, really show our patriotism.
And also, I wanted to say that, oh, I heard Chief Johnson speak briefly, and what caught my attention was she said that juveniles can stay a maximum of six hours. And so obviously, when you're dealing with juvenile, that's a very different system. However, if, I don't believe anybody should be cited and released. I have a store in downtown, and we deal with a lot of shoplifting incidents, and it is heartbreaking and it is frustrating, and why not keep them for the full six hours if that is the maximum that they can do? I know I've talked to certain police officers who've said, yes, they will make it very uncomfortable for any shoplifter, and we'll put handcuffs on them, march them to jail to get fingerprinted and all that. Then I don't know if that is actually just a discretion thing or if it is policy. So I think what needs to happen is there needs to be a strong show of force from the police department to continue to, you know, catch these guys and for all of the business owners to, you know, follow through with prosecution in order for them to be able to do their jobs. What, you know, whether it happens or not, that's secondary. We need to make sure that they are caught, that they are reported, so that crime does not look like it is going down when it's not. We, I've been guilty of that, too, not reporting everything, because I'm like, well, what's the point? You know, we're not doing that. We're going to report everything as it happens, and, you know, adults and children should not just be cited and released. They should be handcuffed and made uncomfortable the maximum amount of time that they can think about what they did, so they know that Manhattan Beach is not an easy target. Because right now, I think we look silly, and a lot of towns look silly in L.A. County, obviously. But we have to do better and send a very strong message, and let's make them as uncomfortable as legally possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
There's no additional request.
Okay. So we're gonna close public comments that you have.
Your Honor, I just want to ask Director Bruce Collin to come expand her statement. Obviously, we're still confused with three things, and I'll wait for you to get down here. Could you explain, go over just in a little more detail about, number one, our appeal process, how it works on our end? Second question, I'll wait, I'll go one at a time about that. Appeal process for the Cucamonges Tower we're hearing about.
Sure. As soon as the decision is made, the residents will now have two weeks to file an appeal, and that appeal has to be filed electronically through our customer service, self-service portal. And the hearing will be held by a, conducted by a third-party independent hearing officer. The hearing officer's decision will be final, and the reason there's confusion about the cost of the appeal is because there's no set fee for it. It's based on however many hours it takes the hearing officer to prepare, to hold the hearing, and then to make a decision and issue a decision letter. So what we'll do is we'll take in what we, what we feel is a reasonable deposit based on what other types of hearings in the city, how long other types of hearings tend to take, and then we'll refund whatever is not used.
A follow-up question to that, and that's gonna be the fee waiver. I'll talk to the city attorney about that. Second process, city control versus federal law. Can you explain that to people who don't understand the difference?
Yes. These types of facilities are what is known as a small cell facility, and the city went through a major code amendment to Title 13 back in 2019, essentially to address all of the changes in federal law related to small cell facilities. And these federal changes took away a lot of the local control, the opportunity for local control. We can have less stringent requirements, but we can have, we cannot have more stringent requirements for these types of facilities in our local ordinance. And so in that sense, we are bound by the federal regulations, and that's what we're required to follow.
One more follow-up. We were here in 2019. I'm trying to explain the difference between the 200-foot rule from schools, why is the four houses from the school, is it outside 200 feet? Is that why we lose the control, the buffer?
This, this particular location is outside, it's just outside the 200 feet.
This is why. All right.
However, there's a possibility that, there's a possibility that even, even without that 200 feet, it would still, the 200 feet would still not apply to this particular project.
Understood.
Because of the design.
Thank you. One last question. City Attorney Barrow, Quinn, the City Council have a right to waive the appeal. One comes in, it satisfies the appeal process. Does the Council have the right to waive that appeal fee?
The City, in the past, for other type of permits, like conditional use permits, the city, people have asked the city, they've sent a letter to the City Council to waive those fees. So it's probably within your discretion to do that upon request for this type of fee.
Once she receives an appeal, we can jump in behind it and waive.
Probably, yeah. I mean, that, that was the practice in many cities, including Manhattan Beach, for use permits. It's always been upon request.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. No more questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Lesser.
Similar questions and comments based on what Councilmember Montgomery just indicated with regard to those who spoke about the antenna sites. I wanted to follow up with the city attorney. We are governed by federal law. I mean, it comes across like we're not listening to the residents, but can you just give a summary on what our rights are as a city, what our abilities are, what our discretion is, as opposed to the federal law that basically usurps our ability to regulate these?
It's very limited. I mean, we talk often about state preempting local control, but it's worse with the federal SEC. I mean, they've basically have decided, for whatever reason, that all the gaps need to be filled, and, you know, that was an important concept, and this is a co-location. I understand staff has been doing some research to find out the prior approval, but when it's already there, it's, the city's power is severely restricted.
Thank you. Thank you. It's part of our challenge. Thank you.
Since that, can we also clarify why it's going there rather than on a commercial corridor like Manhattan Beach Boulevard or Sepulveda? Where do they base that on?
I don't want to speak on behalf of Verizon, who this happens to be, but typically, what they do is they, they check to see where they have gaps in service, and then they also have to check to see where are they allowed to put, to put these facilities. So it's almost like a puzzle. Where do they have a gap in service, and where can they put this facility to address that gap in service?
They have a map that shows that.
Correct.
In their application.
Correct. I couldn't confirm, I couldn't confirm with staff.
Okay. So public comments is closed, and we move on to the consent calendar. So we have a motion to accept. We have a motion to accept by Councilmember Lesser and seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Howard.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And we move on to public hearings. So we are going to conduct a public hearing regarding the proposed five-year capital improvement plan in consideration of a resolution for fiscal year 2024, 2025 through fiscal year 2028, 2029. Public Works Director Lee.
Before Director Lee gets started, I just want to publicly thank Eric, Katie, and the engineering staff for the hard work that went into this. It's obviously a months-long process. There's a lot of work that goes into identifying the projects, the costs, and so on, so hats off to Eric and the engineering staff for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of City Council. Eric Lee, your Public Works Director. Tonight, the Public Works Department is pleased to present the proposed five-year capital improvement plan update for your consideration, and City Engineer Katie Doherty will be given the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Franklin, Honorable Councilmembers. Katie Doherty, I'm City Engineer. I will be giving a brief presentation recapping our discussions so far on the five-year CIP and in hopes of adopting it tonight, but of course, I'm here for questions and can make any revisions as needed. So a brief timeline to recap where we've been. On April 24th, we presented the draft CIP to the Planning Commission for confirmation that it conforms with the city's general plan, which they found that it did. April 25th, we presented the draft CIP to the Parking and Public Improvements Commission. On May 14th, we discussed it here at a City Council meeting. The five-year CIP proposes 94 projects over five years at a total of about $177 million. On April, excuse me, on May 21st, there was an additional opportunity for City Council to discuss the five-year CIP, and here we are tonight on June 4th for final adoption. Quick snapshot of the five-year CIP, there's just about $81 million in previously appropriated funds. This year, we are asking for $32.9 million for this coming fiscal year. And I'll stop there just to note a quick item from the last time we discussed this. On May 21st, there was a request that we include a capital improvement project to do some sidewalk improvements at 33rd West of Sepulveda, and this was a result of the Oak Avenue Manhattan Village Shopping Center Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan. We, staff is proposing to include that project as the next cycle of the annual concrete, annual citywide concrete repairs project. So that will be, right now, we're in the middle of Cycle 2. Cycle 3 can include funds for that project. So there were no changes to the project list specifically, but staff is recommending that we include that in the annual concrete repairs program, which is in the Gas Tax Fund. And with that change, we are also recommending that previously, the Oak, the Sepulveda Oak Neighborhood Traffic Calming Project, which is partially funded by the Manhattan Village Mall, we were recommending that be moved to the new Grants Fund. Now that we have plans to spend it this next fiscal year, we're recommending keeping it where it is, which is the CIP Fund. So that, you'll see that that project has moved from the new Grants Fund that's being proposed back to the CIP Fund, which is where it has previously been shown. And the last minor change that I wanted to highlight was that the HSIP Cycle 11 improvement, intersection improvements project, excuse me, was previously, previously shown to have revenues $10,000 higher. That doesn't accurately reflect the revenues that we're projecting, so it's been reduced by, by $10,000, excuse me, $10,000. So the new total for the projects is $176,968,000 and change. So those are the only changes that have been made since the last time you saw the CIP. Okay. So just a quick recap of the nine categories of the CIP. We have the water sewer and storm drain funds. Those are our enterprise funds that are paid entirely by user fees. We have the streetlight and landscape fund, parking fund, state pier and lot fund. We have our streets sidewalks and right-of-way fund, our CIP projects, and lastly, the new fund that we've introduced this year, which is called the Grants Fund. So tonight, staff is recommending that City Council conduct a public hearing and adopt Resolution 24-0066 approving the five-year capital improvement program for fiscal years 25 through 29. And I'm here for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Okay, colleagues, Councilmember Lesser.
I have a minor question. It would be on page 177 of the staff report. It's regarding the sports court at Marine Avenue Park, pay and play. It's basically the demolition of the existing pay and play facility, but then it goes on, as we've discussed at prior CIP meetings, and says, "and installation of a futsal court." Once again, can you confirm what plans we've even discussed for that facility and what the status is, and can we eliminate, at this point, the designation of this as a futsal, futsal court when we haven't even given that direction?
The answer to the second part of that question is absolutely yes. We can revise that description to remove that language. If you'd like a status from Director Lehman, I can ask him to come up, come up, but my understanding is that this item will come back to you before any final decisions are made on that project.
I think that's the sole point I'm trying to make. Thank you.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Okay, we'll open it up for public comment. Yeah, thank you. Seeing none in chambers, how about online?
There are no requests on Zoom.
Okay. So, comments, colleagues? A motion?
Okay. Here. I'll make a comment. No, I'm trying not to with this cough, but, Your Honor, I said it the last time we met, and I will say it again. This is less a CIP, a capital improvement program for five years than it is just a wish list. And if we want to make it into a actual CIP instead of a wish list, we're gonna need to have a continuous stream of revenue to do that. And the only way that I see might be appetizing enough to the public is if it's shared by the visitors who come here as well. And so that would mean an increase in the sales tax from 9.5% to 10% to create an ongoing revenue stream of $5.5 million a year that we can put through an advisory vote to CIP so that we can actually accomplish these things and not just add to the list year after year after year. This list was, I don't know, 35, 36 million when I started on council years ago, and now it's 177 million. Why? Because we haven't been able to do a lot of the projects because we don't have the money to do them. We have to do them one by one. We have to issue bonds. We incur debt, and it takes a long time to do that. You know, if people want outdoor dining, if they want a pool, if they want parking structures, the money has to come from somewhere, and we don't have it on a year-to-year basis through the general funds, through our sales tax, through our property tax. It's not enough. It's not gonna happen. So someone, especially this council, is gonna have to step up at some point and say, okay, folks, if you want to do it, we gotta pay for it and put it on the ballot to do so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Howard?
Well, I just, I just want to say, well said. You know, I'm making a motion to approve an adopt resolution number 24-0066, which is our five-year capital improvement program, but I appreciate my colleagues saying this is a wish list. However, it is, it is a well-thought-out, and it is a, there is a plan to do what we can, and that is what our Public Works Department works very hard to try and do, and, and I'm grateful to have that. But I do think that it's, it's been gratifying to see certain projects come to fruition, whether it's the reservoir, PEC reservoir, whether it's the fire station, all these things that we actually voted on in maybe 2014 or so, when, when we were all on council before, and to see them finally get done. And it's also gratifying to see after the lean years of 2008, 2009, when we had to really pull back and try to build up our reserves again, that we're able to put something towards, you know, our capital improvements. But it really is incumbent on us to do something to guarantee some sort of revenue stream for facilities and infrastructure. So, well said, and I made a motion to approve.
Thank you. Councilmember Lesser?
And I've seconded the motion and will be echoing my colleagues. I appreciate the hard work of our staff in prioritizing the most fundamental infrastructure-oriented projects that we need to keep our city running. I think they've chosen well with the resources that we have, but I also echo Councilmember Napolitano's comments, that to the extent that we want to keep up with the ordinary wear and tear, let alone the aspirational objectives for our community, to have the sort of facilities that we all would expect, we're going to need a greater revenue stream. We just can't do it with what we have at present, and we'll need to make our case. But certainly, a viable method of doing so in other cities that we should consider would be an increase of our sales tax, because if we don't raise our sales tax, be able to keep the revenue here in projects in our community, that is, I believe, close to the cap, if not the cap, that the county can assess for county-wide projects. So that would be one reason to consider and explore sales tax with a focus on keeping up our own infrastructure here in our community. So I'm pleased to second the motion of Mayor Pro Tem Howard.
Councilmember Montgomery.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is deja vu all over again for me, and most of us were here in 2008. It's 20 years ago. We're still talking about some of this. Gil was here, Director Schley was here, Mark, Bruce, Lisa. I mean, Gil was here, Rettie Schley was here, Mark, Bruce, Lisa. I'll tell you what, I would say three things to anybody looking at this from the outside first time. Look at the majority of the charges of that 177. These aren't the glamorous sexy project, folks. $48 million street sidewalks and other right-of-way. $26 million sewer projects, $27 million water, $36 million storm drain. What there gets you excited? Besides public work, guys, I know you guys. Anybody else wouldn't get excited about these. So these aren't new parks for Parks and Rec, not new fire stations, not another Metlocks, another water treatment plants. This is just, look at the basics we have there. That's basic money. And Councilman Tomlin got it right. It's like, hey, if you have a choice, if you don't raise our sales tax, half cent or a cent, the county will. And they'll get that money, folks, not us. They're going to get it for themselves, we get nothing out of it. So I think, with urgency, as a colleague, that we consider that half cent or at least a full cent, that money is local, stays local, and pays for all this. Otherwise, 20 years from now, when you guys are here, Mayor Protem Horwath, this is the mayor 20 years from now, she'll be talking about these very same items all over again. So I support it. It's about time we do it, but we need help. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. So I echo what everybody has just said here on the, on the dais. It's just like your home, right? You have the budget. You might need a new roof, you might need concrete work, you know, new concrete steps. You might need a new heater, you know, you might need, you know, so just like you have these budgets and priority lists, you know, at home, we have to have it for the city. And we also have great expectations in this city for a high level of service. We all pay a lot of money for our homes, and so we want, you know, commensurate services here, and we expect that. So the, the sales tax, nobody likes to hear it, nobody likes to hear about it, and the fact that it's going. One thing, we don't have hard numbers on it, but sales tax are at least partially, I think, a significant amount paid by visitors. You know, they're coming here. This is a destination. They're driving on our streets, they're staying in our garages, you know, parking in our garages, they're roaming around the streets looking for parking in the garages. So that's all wear and tear, but when they go ahead and buy a meal, buy other items in our stores and things like that, they're at least contributing, you know, to the solution. So I support that as well. So we have a, a motion to accept by Mayor Protem Amy Horwath, and seconded by Councilmember David Lesser. So can we have a vote, please?
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, now we do, we're doing okay?
Great. For me.
So now we're going to move on to the other side of the budget, conduct a public hearing in consideration of resolutions adopting the fiscal year 2025, 2024, 2025 operating budget. So Finance Director Sherrillian.
Well, before Finance Director Sherrillian steps up and presents the budget, I do want to recognize Steve. Steve has announced his retirement from the city.
No.
It's hard to believe. Steve has been a fixture here for 35 years.
What?
His entire career has been with the Finance Department. He started in revenue services as, as basically an account clerk and worked his way up to Finance Director. I appointed him to that position six years ago.
Five years.
Steve's been instrumental in so many of the things we've done over the past six years and even before that. But namely, you talk about some of the debt that we've issued. Steve has made sure we've maintained our AAA credit rating with the rating agencies. We've issued pension obligation bonds. He's helped build policies that help fund some of our CIP projects in the future. He's, he's been involved with the transient occupancy tax election back in 2019. He worked really hard on that. And, and again, the AAA, and so many other things that I could go on and on about Steve, but again, he's been just a tremendous asset to the city. He's going to retire and, and enjoy the good life, still live here in town, so maybe one day he'll be sitting in one of your chairs up there.
Well, good. Payback.
Yeah.
With that, I want to congratulate Steve. Obviously, I won't be here as well to enjoy seeing Steve on the council perhaps, but I've enjoyed working with him all these years, and, you know, he's, he's been team finance all along. He brings great energy and enthusiasm to everything that he does. And the one thing I will say about Steve is that he's, he's kind of like that song, "Put me in, coach, I'm ready to play." And it didn't matter how much was on Steve's plate, he would always come to me and say, "How can I help you?" And that was true with the TOT, the pension obligation bonds, any of those projects. You know, Steve was the first one to step up and say, "I know I got a lot of shrimps on my Barbie," as he would always say, but he was, he was always willing to take on additional. So, so with that, I do want to publicly thank Steve for that, and of course, we'll have time to have going-away recognition for him. Steve's last day with the city will be July 5th. But with all of that, I do want to thank Steve, Libby, and Julie, and Marcelo, and the finance staff for putting together the budget that's before you this evening for adoption. And it's all of their hard work and dedication that it shows in this plan, and I'm sure he'll be happy to answer any questions at, at the end of the presentation. So, thank you, Steve.
Great. Not going to clap you out. There's a left.
Wow, call for the question.
It's going fast.
Wow.
It can only go downhill from here, thank you.
Bruce is always a maestro with, with his words. I appreciate that very much, Bruce. Our careers, class of 89, we're two months behind each other. I think he started in May and I was in July 5th, so, yeah, so kind of had that career path together and grew together and learned and everything together. But just a few words, my 35-year tenure has been filled with wonderful professional opportunities. I really want to express my gratitude to Bruce for entrusting me with the role of Finance Director for nearly the last six years. Together, we achieved significant milestones of fortifying the city's financial framework. Throughout my career, I've had the privilege of collaborating with extraordinary, extraordinary individuals, and our current executive leadership team undoubtedly shines among them. My sincere appreciation, appreciation goes out to every department for the opportunity to collaborate with you. And lastly, I extend my thanks to city council for your leadership in navigating competing financial priorities and making prudent decisions. And there will be a celebration.
Who's paying?
We'll talk later.
All right, on to, on to the budget. This is our public hearing tonight for our fiscal year 2425 budget. This is a long-term process. It takes about six months. We kick it off internally in December, and we have a, a community meeting in February, budget study sessions, we have the proposed budget, and another opportunity, a couple of our opportunities in May to talk about the spending plan for 2025, and it all leads to tonight, which is the public hearing for the adoption of the spending plan for 2025 and the GAN appropriation limit. So tonight serves as the public hearing for the fiscal year 25 operating budget. The proposed operating budget will give a brief overview. There'll be changes to the proposed operate, any changes to the proposed operating budget is in Exhibit A, and none of those items have fiscal implications. Resolutions for adoption will be 2025 operating budget as well as the GAN appropriation limit. Our fiscal outlook, our spending plan, and for city council priorities of public safety and maintaining essential services are intact. Revenues are stable and growing in key areas. Balanced budget with a surplus of $508,000 to the general fund, and the city's AAA credit rating reaffirmed back in 2021 when we issued pension obligation bonds. Overall, the financial position allows us to reinvest in services, service levels, maintenance, and infrastructure correspondings with course, community priorities as well as city council priorities. Our, our personnel costs include MLU adjustments, the full impact of positions that we approved in the mid-year in February, and four new full-time positions that are included in this year's budget. Our general fund reserves, we have about $29.1 million in, in three buckets. Our policy reserves are 20% of expenditures with $19.5 million. The economic uncertainty is $4 million, and our unreserved is $5.6 million. We have some transfers this year, transfers out to the CIP fund for $1 million, and then the street lighting landscaping fund, which is about $313,000. We're also utilizing some savings from doing those pension obligation bonds for unfunded liability pension policy, with the CIP getting another one point, close to $1.2 million, and then the Section 115 trust for about $1.8 million there. We have strong revenues in the general fund and a balanced budget, again, a surplus of $508,000 with services being maintained. Our significant additions and initiatives include a vehicle replacement with fire engine for $2 million, capital improvement projects supported by that $1 million transfer, and police SWAT rescue vehicle, which we're calling Bruce's Bearcat, and contract services including the CPI adjustment enhancements. Our recommendations for tonight is to conduct the public hearing and adopt Resolution 2467 adopting the fiscal year 2425 operating budget as proposed and amended in Exhibit A, and adopt Resolution 2468 establishing the GAN appropriation limit for 2425, which shows still an availability spending limit of about 30%. Thank you.
Any questions, colleagues? We'll open up the floor to public comments. How about on Zoom?
There's no request on Zoom.
Okay.
There you go.
Your Honor?
Oh, yes.
I would move to adopt Resolution Number 240066. Do we need to do this in two separate ones? What was the other one?
24.
And 24 is 0068.
68.
Yeah, you could do both at the same time.
Okay, and that would be for both.
67, 68, 68's the GAN.
Right.
Okay, so we have a motion to accept by Councilmember Steve Napolitano, seconded by me. So can we have a, oh, I'm sorry, we have a comment by, I don't know.
Just one day, the next council, one of zero people show up, talk about the budget. Not about dog parks or anything else, we talk about the budget. And once again, I'm not surprised, no one else is here, an election year, I think that someone actually show up that's a candidate, that will show up at this event, talk about the budget. Not one of them showed up, not a one. Disappointing, but not surprising. But the budget's good, I'm, great people, Steve, we're going to miss you, but you haven't left yet.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Well, and it is as your last budget, Councilmember Montgomery. No, I mean, it should be your last budget, so I fully expect you to return as a resident.
Absolutely.
So you'll be coming down and speaking on the budget, right?
Yeah, absolutely, I hope so.
Tom is with his glass of Chardonnay.
I love it.
Okay, so can we have a vote, please?
Okay, oh, there we go.
There we go. Thank you.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, so we move on to general business, item number 11, consideration of awarding an RFP number 1319-24 with Western Audiovisual Security for audio, video, and broadcasting services.
Yes, and IT Director Miguel Gardado will be making a presentation. He's remote with us this evening, he's under the weather, but he's online, as well as the requested supplier that we've selected here to answer any questions. So Miguel?
Okay. So we will test the equipment.
And replace it.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Franklin and members of the city council. Miguel Gardado, your Information Technology Director. This evening, I'm joined by Lisa Tamara, our city clerk, and Tatiana Potacova, our IT Senior Management Analyst. And we're here to discuss the, the consideration of RFP number 1319-24 in adopting that resolution for an agreement with Western Audiovisual. You know, it's no, it's no surprise, but the existing system is a little bit outdated as some of the issues that we've had, you know, since I've been here. And so just wanted to talk a little bit about those items that, that are affecting the quality and the real, and the reliability of our broadcast. The current limitations of our system are primarily include core audio clarity, outdated video equipment, and unsupported audio control software in our back room, which makes the broadcasting of our meetings very, very challenging, not only for city staff, but also our contractor. The last upgrade of this system was done in 2014. However, it did not include audio system, which was done even earlier than 2014. And best practices in this field recommend that equipment refreshments happen every four to seven years as technologies progress and, and, and get better. We should, we should keep our hardware the same, but right now, we're stretching some of our equipment to that 10-year mark, and actually, some of it even longer. Again, making it a challenge for us to be able to have reliable meetings. You know, we've, we've run across some compatibility issues with modern technologies as well, and, you know, this is just, maintaining the system as it is just increases the risk of failure and our inability to be able to broadcast our meetings to our citizens. You know, a little bit about what's in the scope of this work and the benefits to the city. You know, the project aims to replace all, all the old audio, video, and broadcasting equipment, enhancing AV and broadcast experience to the public and our staff. The scope includes the update of the three systems, the audio, video presentation, broadcast, which is the live recording and the streaming of our meetings, and also the on-air channel playback. So this is what we shoot out to, to Frontier and to Spectrum. You know, the project also will be doing some modifications to the dais as we, as we put new, new equipment in, we're looking at some modifications to bring in some of the equipment, but it should be transparent to you all as you sit in your, in your positions. A little bit of background on our process, the city released an RFP in early February, and the city received two proposals, one from, from Western Audiovisual and Security that came in at $647,846, and one from WEP Inc., a company based at Camarillo, and they came in at $1,052,149. Western was selected for their comprehensive understanding of our project, the experience, and the qualified team that they're bringing forward to this project. And overall, it's a really, it's a better value for, for the city in the long run as we have had an established relationship with them. Western AV has done similar projects with other municipalities and special districts, such as the city of Saritas, the city of Ventura, and also a special district in San Diego, the Oltai Water District, and many much, and many other projects that they have done throughout our region. A detailed breakdown of the total cost of this project is coming out to $791,884. And the breakdown is as follows. $688,914 is for the equipment, software, the labor, the training, all the stuff that's going to happen on the back end, the gutting of the systems, the cleaning out of all cabling, and, and just making it a new environment that's able, that's really easy to troubleshoot and, and maintain. We're also including, in that cost, we're also including four years of extended maintenance of $68,524. So this will be a system that will be solely, solely maintained for the next five years as the first year is included in the base price. And then in addition, you know, the, the $791,000, almost, oh, the $791,884 carries 5% contingency for any unexpected findings as we, as we gut the room and start tearing into the walls and running new cables and things of that nature. So we wired a carry $34,446 for that. Sufficient funding is available in our PEG-restricted accounts. We have approximately $892,570. These funds are debrived from the cable subscribers to both Chartered Spectrum and Frontier. As a reminder, that's our Spectrum Channel number eight and Frontier Channel 35. And these funds can be used for, on projects like this that support the PEG projects and purchases. In the proposed pro, if the, if this proposed project were to be approved, there will be a remaining PEG balance of $101,0686. And I will add that any unused funds from the project after completion will be returned to these PEG accounts. You know, these upgrades are important, and they do cause an impact. And what we are doing is our, if this agreement were to be approved, we are scheduled to begin working on the actual physical demolition and, and building of this system on July 17th. That's actually after our second meeting in July. And we, we, we have an aggressive schedule, but have met with a consultant, and we will be done by August 30th. So our goal is to have our first meeting in September back in the council chambers. You know, you're, you're back in the council chambers. You know, your IT department, the City Clerk, we completely understand the importance of public meetings, such as council and commission meetings. And so we have worked with our commission liaisons to identify their needs during these upgrade, or this, or like during this upgrade period. And we've coordinated with them to identify those meetings, and then we coordinated with Western AV to ensure continuity of operations for council meetings and commission meetings during this construction time. We, at this point, we are considering the Police and Fire Conference Room as our temporary alternative to the council chamber. And of course, with any, any changes like this, we need to communicate this out to our citizens. And so we'll be working closely with our communications team to publicize the council and commission meeting relocations for the month of August. Again, I'm here before you requesting that we award the RFP Number 131924 and approving the agreement to Western AV. And in closing, I do have Mr. Darren Dorshel, the City Consultant, who helped with the development of the RFP, and Haley Schelling and Eric Wilson from Western AV are on the call, and we're here to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I'm open to any questions you might have.
Okay, colleagues, any questions?
I have one.
Yes.
Thank you, Director Gardado. It's David, yeah, I was going to say Councilmember Lesser.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you just briefly describe how Zoom will be better integrated into the system that we currently have?
Yeah, so again, I touched a little bit about the newer technologies, and this is one where we brought in Zoom to a system that was not inherently open to taking these types of feeds, but we made it work. What we're doing in this redesign is that the system that we're bringing in is going to have all the capabilities to be able to work with Zoom and any other broadcast stream that we might want to provide.
That's fine for now. Thank you.
Okay. And I have a question. How long did it take to get that fund up to $892,000?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question, and we did do some analysis on that. And we went back, we went back five years. So the average, the average growth between 2019 and 2024 till now has been about 581,180 for what we call Time Warner or Charter or Spectrum now. And then Verizon has been about nine, has been 9,197. And so we did a little bit of analysis here. If we were to continue at our, at our current growth for the next 10 years, we would potentially see a growth of, in 2034, we would see a growth of $673,148 if we were to continue 10 years at the numbers that they are today. We have seen fluctuations in, in the money that is being brought in because of the subscribership. And, you know, the pandemic had a lot to do with that because everybody was mainly not watching TV but streaming. And so you cancel those subscriptions and maybe do the Netflix or some of the other services. But in talking to our consultant, we are seeing an uptick, or there has been an uptick over the last couple of years, and it's due to live sports. Live sports don't stream on those types of services. And so you need to have a subscription to a Spectrum or Verizon or Time Warner to be able to get those channels, to be able to get all that. And so we are seeing an uptick on that.
Okay, and how many, what other uses are of these funds? I mean, are they used for anything else?
Yeah, so.
I just don't want to leave it. I just don't want to leave it empty when some other need comes up.
Yeah, great question. And, you know, I'm actually going to dial a friend. I'm going to dial Lisa, who's on the call. But I do believe that the city made a concerted effort to use these funds only for public meetings and things of that nature. And I think that that was passed through a resolution. But Lisa, could you help me with that question?
Yeah, that is confirmed. But as far as what other uses could be used, that I don't know.
Okay, well, obviously, we haven't used them. So, that's great. Thank you. So, open it for, any other questions? Open it for public comments? Come on, don't disappoint Councilmember Montgomery.
Exactly.
Just ask one que, no, that's okay. Seeing none in chambers, how about online?
There's no request on Zoom.
Okay, we're going to close public comments. Any other comments, or we've got a motion by Councilmember Montgomery and seconded by Mayor Protem Amy Holworth?
And I just have a comment, a quick comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, that's fine. I mean, I, this is so needed. Technology has been changing a quick clip, and this will just improve our ability to communicate to the residents, you know, and hopefully, we will get far less emails and texts during the meetings themselves that say, "I can't access the meeting." It's, you know, "What's going on?" It's a real problem. I mean, we want what we are doing to be seen and heard by the public. So thank you, Director Contreras. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your support.
Okay, so.
I mean, we see the motion, Your Honor?
Yeah.
I see the motion.
Okay.
So my move to award RFP Number 1319-24, adopt resolution, approve an agreement with Western Audio Visual and Security for audio, video, and broadcasting services for a not-to-exceed about $791,884, and the PEG restricted funds, everybody understands that restricted funds is part of it, and also add that folks for 10 years have been using duct tape and patches. As Mayor Protem, Mayor Protem knows that, that residents are unhappy, especially seniors, when you cut out the feed. We may not see it up here, but we hear about it personally, by text, or by call, or by emails. And just to put it perspective, folks, this came out when the iPhone 6 was out, 2014. We're on iPhone 15 now. Think about that. iPhone 6, iPhone 15. So we're upgrading to iPhone 15. So Miguel, you get a brand-new shiny iPhone 15, and it's all yours. That's our motion.
All right.
Thank you.
And it was seconded by Mayor Protem Holworth?
Motion passes five, zero.
AB 1234 reports? City Manager, or anybody? Colleagues? No? None? How about future agenda items?
David Hammond.
I have one.
Yes?
So may I ask the City Clerk to show two images in connection with a request for just a second vote on an item related to rear yard setback requirements? Namely, it's an issue that we as a city have control over. It's not something that's usurped by state housing law. Some residents asked me to show what was happening in their backyard. I went over to see it. Essentially, a rear yard structure is going up on the lot line. There's no setback whatsoever. Can you show the next image?
That's it.
Is it east side or west side?
This is the backyard, and literally, it's being built on top of what was a wall. So I'd like to talk about it and what we might be able to do in our code.
I'll second that. I'll give you another.
Yeah.
Vote for that.
That's it.
Now you're bringing it up. There's a house behind my mom's that has the exact same thing. Garage is back right on the lot line.
Is it ADU?
It's a garage. It's been there since the 80s.
Mayor, just a question. I don't know if we're allowed to do this. City Attorney, can we, could council even ask for, along the lines of your voluntary registration that the chief brought up, please, can we consider a voluntary, a long registration, something on the helmet that says, a numbering that says, "Hey, I'm number one voluntary registration," on those e-bikes that have parents, to get voluntary consent, that we could, not only would the bike be registered, but the badge and the helmets have a number on it tied to it as well. It's voluntary. No one's making you do it. But if your parents give you a letter that says, "I consent," it's voluntary registration, why not register the helmets as well, so we all know?
Yeah, we could probably do that. I mean, because it's completely voluntary.
And that's my.
I'll second that. Or just any, bring back voluntary registration options.
Yes, entirely, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I have a future agenda item, please. So it has to do with Uncle Bill's Pancake House, who has been asking for a revised CUP with the same number of hours. They only now, right now, they have the patio is, in the existing CUP from many, many decades ago, is from 7:00 AM. They want to change, is it 9:00 AM? They just simply want to change that to 7:00 AM and then close at 3:00 PM versus 5:00 PM. And I would like, in honor of their contributions to the city of Manhattan Beach, they are an icon. People come here, unlike shark art on the wall, they come here to have breakfast or lunch at.
Could have both.
They could, and they could have both.
No reason.
Could have had a vote.
Could have been here for, anyway, financially, and so I would like to see us have council waive the $6,000 registration fee, or $6,000 fee for the change of the CUP, and also waive, there's been like $7,000 in fines as a result of this, and finally, put this matter to rest. And they have been in operation for 63 years or 78 years, depending upon what. And I know, so I'm just looking for a second to further discuss this.
So wait, so you're saying they want to now open it, they want to have the patio, the outside dining open at 7:00 AM?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, just clarifying.
Why is that a CUP issue as opposed to the encroachment issue?
Encroachment.
The encroachment was the patio usage. City Attorney Barrow's going to answer that.
I was going to say, it says it's not on the agenda if you want a report from the staff about why it's a used permit. It's a condition on the used permit.
If there's no second, I'll second it. If there's a second, I'll be a third.
Okay, so there's two. That's all you need for now. So we'll give you a report.
Okay, thank you. City Manager report?
Yes, I'd like to close the loop on something council discussed at the last meeting. That was namely, the declaring the vacancy of Alan Kerschenbaum's seat on the PPIC. Upon further review, it appears as though there was not a correct accounting of his absences, and he did not reach that for absentee level. But, so he is, continues to serve on the PPIC. And we're also continuing to take a look at the municipal code and any changes that may be necessary for that. But I just wanted to close the loop.
Okay, thank you. Informational items, seeing none. So we will adjourn to?
Six.
Oh, 6 o'clock on the 11th, June 11th?
Uh, 12.
Uh, no, 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 18, sorry.
Right.
Yeah, that would cut short a lot of things.
We're not going to have a closed session.
Right. June 18th at 6:00 PM. Thank you very much.